Ready when you are sitting.
I'm going to call this public hearing to order. In attendance this evening are supervisors Fisher, Fleer, Barney, and Cassiola, as well as township solicitor Gretchen Moore, township engineer Dan Dazeroth, and township assistant manager and zoning director Jack King. If you intend to speak at all, or think you may speak tonight, please stand up and raise your right hand so that you can get sworn in. Even if you think there's an off chance you may want to come to the microphone and say something, please do that.
Just as a side note, when you do come up to speak, if you would step up, state your name and address, speak directly into the microphone. We are streaming it live, we're also recording it. It'll be up after about an hour, hour after the meeting's over.
So, don't yell out from the audience too. If you want to be, if you want to be, if you want to be addressed, then just step to the microphone, state your name and address, and we will address everybody who wants to speak that way. Dan, do you want to step up? Oh, I'm sorry, before you start, Dan, thank you Gretchen. We had an executive session this evening at 6:30 prior to this meeting to discuss legal advice on the proposed legislative changes.
So, good evening, everybody. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Dan Dazeroth. I'm the township engineer. I've been asked to give a presentation tonight and assist the township on some proposed changes to the Unified Development Ordinance and some zoning amendments. So, if you would give me the opportunity to get through this presentation, I know there's going to be a section for questions, but there's a lot of information being proposed tonight. I'd like to break this down into a couple different parts and try to give some good explanations to everybody, and then hopefully we can get some good dialogue going after we get through the presentation. So, the background for the project, starting in 2019, and then finally being completed here in 2023, the township actually developed a new comprehensive plan. So, a comprehensive plan is really a roadmap for the township's future. Townships usually develop them every 10 years, and what happens is out of these comprehensive plans comes a series of goals. So, the township adopted this plan and moved forward with one of the goals as it relates to growth in the township. So, goal number two of the comprehensive plan was that Cecil Township will proactively manage future growth to protect the scenic beauty, its scenic beauty, while capturing opportunities to improve the community and bolster its tax base. So, it's a pretty broad goal, but it was further defined in the development of a land use map. So, the land use map really categorized what the township thought about the future and what it wanted the township to be down the road, and sort of categorized it into different bigger components, residential, commercial, industrial, and even out of the steering committee came two proposed new zoning districts. So, what's happened is, and why we're all here tonight, is the township has initiated the process of implementing some of the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, and I'm going to go through those now. So, this is actually the future land use map. It's not a zoning map, it's just a guide, and each one of these colors represents a different type of land use as proposed. And it's different than the zoning map, which is the actual zoning of property, what can be done and the regulations related to that. So, as I go through this tonight, I'm going to try, like I said, to break this into components. The first part of it is, we want to talk about three zoning map changes within the current zoning districts. That means it's just property that it's one zone right now, and the township has thought that due to the availability of sewer and water, being a large tract of land, it could be an advantage to development in the near-term future. So, we're going to look at those first, and then we're going to talk about the creation of the two mixed-use districts. This is new, this is being presented tonight for review and comment. Then we're going to talk about really just some general changes to the ordinances, which were also a part of this, and I'll explain about that in a little bit more. And then, the supervisors are going to comment on this information, and then there'll be public comment. So, moving on, one other thing, just from a process standpoint, the State of Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code is the guideline by which all of this has to happen. The Municipalities Planning Code, we call it the short-term MPC. And the Municipalities Planning Code requires that for properties with zoning amendments and such zoning amendments that are planned tonight, there's a number of things that have to happen. The property owners with the rezoning plan on their property have to be directly notified by mail, by regular mail. They also have to be physically posted, which they have. The plan has to be sent to the Township Planning Commission, which it has, and it also has to be sent to the County Planning Commission, which it has. In addition to that, the supervisors felt that in order to get as much public input as possible, that they would have all of the property owners within 300 feet of any proposed zoning district change be notified also by regular mail. And this has also happened, but this is not a requirement. But, again, it was, it was done to promote more interest in the plan. This meeting tonight has also been advertised in the paper, and the planning commission has already, at least initially, reviewed some of the proposals and provided some comments. So, with that, I'm going to move on to, just to talk about, you know, what'll happen after tonight. Just comments will be taken and be reviewed. The planning commission is also going to review this later this week, and really, any action by the Board of Supervisors, the earliest that could occur would be in September related to one, or all, or none of the comments. It could, it could continue to go on based upon the comments that are received. So, this is probably the most simplest part of the changes. I'm going to start out with the zoning map changes within existing zoning districts that we have. So, what we have here is this, this is the township zoning map you see in front of you. The, again, the different colors represent different zoning districts. The proposal here, and I'll drill down to these, but I just wanted to show it from a, from a bigger picture. There's three proposed changes. The first change is to take some R1 property and extend the SD district. The SD district is, is really South Point, so this would be a small piece to add on to the same type of zoning that's in South Point. The second change is to change a parcel of property that's being revitalized. The old, at the old, up above Muse, it's currently zoned BPD. It would be, proposed to be reserved to industrial. And then finally, the third parcel of ground being considered is a parcel of ground out on Route 980 that's being proposed to be changed from R1 to C1. So, the first map, just to blow it up, the PPD district here, now, this is the existing zoning map, is adjoining some industrial zoning. The township feels that it needs, at least there's a lack of industrial property in the township, and this property lends itself to the lighter industrial uses that would be proposed. I'm going to talk in a little bit, but there would be a buffer proposed around this property, at least as it goes over towards the Muse School, and we can talk about that in a little bit. But the proposal is to make this light industrial. The thought is that these would be the type of uses that are in the light industrial district, such as warehousing and landscaping and other things that are proposed within there, not at heavy industrial use. The second change is proposed from R1 to C1. C1 is commercial. Again, this is a large tract of ground adjacent to a state road, can easily be extended with public sewers, it has water. The thought here is that there is a need for some commercial development. This could possibly be a number of different things within the commercial district, but given the growth in residential, the hope is that there would be some support services for the residential district. There's no proposal on this right now. The thought here is just to further enhance the opportunity by changing it from R1 to C1. So, the last change is, just as I said, an extension of two properties in the SD district. Again, these properties can be easily served by sewer, they have water, they're, it's a logical extension of the SD district. So, that pretty much concludes the first, and the first part of what is being proposed tonight. And I'm going to move on to the next one, where we'll get a little bit more complicated. This is, this is creation of some new districts, and the idea out of the comprehensive plan, as I said, was to create some, two new mixed-use districts. The mixed uses are a combination of residential and some light commercial that might be available to those types of districts. So, as an overview, there's a mixed-use residential, which includes single-family, multifamily townhouses and garden apartments, and then there's mixed-use commercial. This provides a mix of also single-family residential in a master plan, and also allows for some commercial uses. If anybody is familiar with the Hastings development in South Fayette Township, I think that's probably the closest development that I can think is a mixed-use in the area. It does have a variety of different housing. It has some senior living, it has some commercial in terms of a restaurant and a bike shop. So, those are what we're talking about with kind of the mixed use. What's in the mixed use, in the mixed-use residential development, all of those have to have public sewer and water. There's a requirement for a traffic study and parking study to make sure that we're not going to make traffic worse and have parking nightmares. The uses by right, you can read those, what they are, but they're really just residential uses. And then there's a conditional use for a community residential home. How do we control that? The use regulations? We do that by making sure that the new developments will need to provide a mixture of at least two different types of residential unit type, residential types. It's going to set the percentage and area limits of those type of dwelling units. No more than six townhouses in any one row of townhouses. No high-rise structures. Accessory structures such as garages, sheds, and other things will be normally permitted as they are now. The maximum density is eight dwelling units per acre. So, if I had 10 acres, the maximum number of units I could put on it would be 80 units if theoretically you could fit that many. It is important also to note in here that we also have an existing section in the ordinance, the Planned Residential Development Section, with a whole host of other requirements that will be applied if somebody tries to develop in the mixed-use residential. So, again, we're trying to enhance development, but control it. There's also some suggested area and bulk regulations within the ordinance that allow single-family lots down to as low as 50 feet within the planned use, and it allows for different sizes for all the way up to garden apartments that they require bulk and area dimensions. So, moving on to the mixed-use commercial, the difference between the mixed-use commercial is to try to take advantage of existing residential land that is along state highways that would not, doesn't have the infrastructure as much to support commercial development. So, again, as it's proposed, all developments in the MUC district will be required to have public water and sewer. Those new developments would also require traffic and parking studies. The uses would be limited, as they are right now, within the commercial district section of the ordinance, and the commercial, or the conditional uses would also stay the same. So, how do we control the MUC district? Again, area and bulk regulations to comply with what are currently are in the C1 district. There's buffers required for property that be perimeter buffers. You're not allowed to develop anything for a tract of 25, over 25 acres, a 50-foot buffer is required, less than 25, a 25-foot buffer. The maximum size of any one building that could be constructed in the MUC is 20,000 square feet, which would be equivalent to a drugstore. Access to these structures, accessory structures would also be allowed, and then we inherit and encourage sidewalks and pedestrian amenities. So, we took these two different ordinances, and we also ran them by the planning commission, and we discussed with them their comments, and they, they had some questions which are listed here. But basically, their questions were, how could we better regulate these uses? They liked the concept of mixed use, but they wanted to be able to control it. They asked us to look at some other ordinances. We did review three other ordinances related to the mixed-use developments. Cranberry Township in Butler County has an ordinance. They basically control it with perimeter and with their setback issues. The Town of McCandless in Allegheny County has a complex development ordinance, which I'm familiar with and don't like at all. It's more based upon environmental uses. And then finally, South Park Township in Allegheny County, they have more of a transportation, what they call a TOOD ordinance. We like this one the best because it allows some flexibility in design, and again, it adds some good controls. Controls the bulk regulations, controls the maximum building size, and it requires, you know, a mix of residential uses. So, if, if the township decides to proceed with these new ordinances to develop these new districts, where would they be proposed? Initially, the only thoughts were, again, to look at areas that had sewer and water, were readily available to good transportation, and sort of trying to take advantage of what was recommended in the comprehensive plan and the land use map. The area along Rising Road with the availability of sewers and the new highway was thought to be of an advantage, and that would be an area that this new zoning district would be concentrated on. So, specifically along Rising Road, this is the, I guess for orientation purposes, this is Rising Road. This existing sewage treatment plant is located here. This is Creedmoor that sits below Rising Road, and as you advance up, you get to the road that actually leads you up to the expressway, which I believe is right opposite this property in green, which is Silver Creek. This is the newly approved PRD plan that was approved not too long ago. So, again, this is a mix of commercial in pink, the mixed-use residential, which is in yellow, and the mixed-use commercial, which is in orange, or salmon, whatever you want to call that color. So, these are, this, these areas are currently, at least on the table, what the supervisors asked to look at these particular areas. And then there's one other area where we thought mixed-use commercial might come into play, and that was on the outskirts of Muse to act as a buffer in between the industrial property, the residential property, and the, the school, which is in this area. So, that's the conclusion of the discussion of the two mixed-use districts, and then I'd like to wrap it up with just the general changes to the Township Unified Development Ordinance, which we refer to as the UDO. This is, this is the guiding document that the township uses for either zoning or subdivision and land development. So, periodically, township actually, actually looks at their ordinances and makes updates. And there can be a variety of reasons to update your ordinances. The first one is to correct areas that require interpretation that are not clear in the code, and that result in people having to go to the zoning hearing board and interpretations being made by people other than the Board of Supervisors. The second thing that we do that for is just updating the code to address new trends in development, and then finally, making corrections or, or things that need changed that are generally the way the Township Zoning Office operates every day. So, we have a little combination of those in the current ordinance that's proposed. And just from a very high level, I have a list of some of the things that are being proposed here. But generally, they're just changing code enforcement to Township Officer, Township Zoning Officer. There's some new definitions and clarifications to existing definitions. There's some requirements for collecting escrows for review of certain type of applications. There's some corrections to, or changes to the extension of time granted for conditional use approvals and approved plans to agree with the Municipalities Planning Code. There's one addition of a use to provide for warehouse in the C1 district, and that would be just interior warehouse space in the C1 district. There's some changes to the accessory use size chart. And then, one thing that I wanted to talk about that's sort of the, sort of the biggest change with this group of changes is the addition of an accessory dwelling unit as, as an accessory section in the ordinance. So, we added something called an ADU, which is an accessory dwelling unit. This could be termed, in other terms, like a mother-in-law suite. It could be an apartment over somebody's garage. It could be a separate building on your property if you have enough area to do it. But, but again, this was thought of as a good idea by the planning commission, but they wanted some controls on this. So, the way this is going to be controlled is that it only would be allowed through a conditional use process, which would require a hearing. It must be the secondary unit to the primary structure. It has to comply with all the current area and bulk regulations for the zoning district that it's located. And then, it has to comply with at least a minimum size of 400 square feet to be considered an ADU. It has to be constructed in a similar fashion to the, to the.
Dan, I'm going to pause you for a second on this one. We're going to hold this one for, and not address this one tonight. We need to make some updates with Gretchen.
Okay.
So, no need to like go through this one.
Okay, very good. All right. So, I'll, I'll wrap it up very quickly. Then, we talked about three zoning map changes here tonight, the creation of two new mixed-use districts, the potential location of those zoning districts, and then we just reviewed some general changes to the ordinance. So, that's it.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Board members, anything you want to ask, call out, talk about?
I just want to point out, when Dan talked about the mixed use, the residential mixed use and the commercial mixed use, it's not a mixed-up use, in, at least in the commercial. It's not where there could be houses and businesses next to each other. It's, he showed that plan, I think, was it South Park? No, South Fayette. I mean, there's, there's categories of, you know, there could be residential here, commercial here, residential here, some of the mild commercial. It is all service commercial also. It's not like our C1 district where it allows a lot of businesses. But the businesses that are allowed were probably half of the original commercial uses that we allowed. We actually went through and took out all the mild uses, or picked all the mild uses in this, what they call, service uses and compatible uses and put that in that new zone. But again, I just want to point out, they're, they're not mixed up in, in that zone. They're, they're actually in their own separate parcels.
I have something, I have a question, but I'm going to ask Gretchen. Yeah, so, just for a point of clarification, Tom and I have had quite a few heated discussions about this. While I understand what he's trying to point out, that it's not mixed-up use, I also don't want people to misunderstand that parcels abut each other, so they sit next to each other, which means you could have a commercial use next to a residential use. It's not going to be like a house, a store, a house, a store, but you could have houses next to stores, you know. And, and there is a certain population of people that are looking for that. But, but it is more mixed up than just kind of what we currently have.
But again, there are buffers. If it's a residential use against the commercial, there will be buffering requirements to protect the residential use.
Yes, agree. Can I ask you a question, Tom? So, mixed-use residential. So, when I'm looking at them side by side, and I've looked at them side by side a bunch, it seems to me the only dramatic difference is like that we're adding garden apartments to mixed-use residential. So, why create the category?
But, but that allows the property owner to pick whatever kind they want. We've, our zoning officer, and we have run into that where a person has like an apartment building, and he wants to turn it into some other kind of residential, you know, like a garden unit, and he doesn't meet the requirements for that. So, on, on new property now, if we have this mixed-use residential, it gives the property owners the choice. They can, you know, go with really what, what kind of residential uses they want, rather than us dictating that this has to be townhouses and this has to be apartments, or this, this can only be garden apartments.
So, I don't disagree with you. My concern, though, is you would, then, the, or the person owning the parcel would have to come in for a zoning change, because there's not, we're not adding a ton of mixed-use residential. So, why not just add garden apartments under the definition, under the residential definitions, to allow for that versus creating a whole separate category just to allow for garden apartments?
But, our ordinance for specific, even if we added garden apartments under the definition, garden apartments have to have their own, a certain kind of entrance. So, I mean, we'd have to, we could do that, but we'd have to adjust all the definitions too. Then, it would have to go hand in hand, because each type of unit has its own special requirements. So, so, just adding it without changing the definition of garden apartments, it wouldn't work without a definition. So, we could do that.
I agree. I just think that it gives, after thinking about it, gives more freedom. If the purpose is to allow people the choice, then we should allow the choice in any residential zone and not just those that are specifically zoned.
Well, we can't do that in any residential.
No, not any residential zones that it would apply. So, R3.
R3s in particular.
Right, and maybe even an R2. But like, you, if we're going to do that, there's a lot more R3 out there than there would be mixed-use residential instead of forcing a parcel owner to come in for a zoning change, which can be lengthy.
See, actually, there isn't a lot of R3. And the other thing is, I'm not sure why it was left out of the definition. I'm unfamiliar with that reason why, but if there was some reason behind it, I don't know. So, we could look into that too, to make sure it's, it could work.
We'll have Gretchen look into that. Okay. Really quickly, just for a point of clarification, on Slide 30, it talks about the code enforcement officer replaced with a township zoning officer. I don't want anyone running out thinking that we're eliminating our code enforcement officer's job. This is different. This is code enforcement under the township zoning, which is different than like building codes. So, I don't want that to be the next rumor in Cecil Township of them getting rid of our code enforcement officer, because that's not what this applies to. And then, do we want to talk about the accessory dwelling unit? Or do we, and the suggested changes, or just move that and let Gretchen work on that?
I think we need to go over the, the suggestions that our solicitor had and do more clarification before we work on that issue.
So, we're not addressing it tonight? I agree. Okay, I just want to make sure the rest of the board did too. Any other comments by the board before we open it up to the floor?
Yes, I know Dan had mentioned that there's a couple areas that we can really address right now for zoning changes. And as Dan said, the, the, once the comprehensive plan was done, the township can look at all those changes they suggested and pick out a few of them and change them today, you know, in September, and then work on some more. And next year, we could pick out, find out some more that should be changed to comply with that comprehensive plan map. But, these ones in particular, as Dan said, they are readily available for water and sewer. And I've said it all along, that South Point was our driver for our, our tax base that kept our taxes from going up all these years. South Point is done. I mean, every building is built out in it. So, I use that for an example. If we're taking $1.5 million from real estate tax from South Point this year, that's all we're going to get next year. Yet costs go up, you know, our contracts and things go up. If we don't do something to find, for future boards even, some areas to increase the tax base, then, you know, they're going to be in trouble and they're going to have to raise taxes, where we've had the luxury of not having to raise taxes yet. So, we have to be on the lookout for the future. And there's a long-term future, the. And there's long-term future that the comprehensive talks about, like a 10-year plan, but you know, we're looking, you know, at use on that property that could be available tomorrow for development. And maybe that property along South Point, extending South Point development, that could be ready tomorrow also. So, we're looking at things that could be done right now and then we'll keep working on things that could be done, you know, for our future.
Any other board comments? I'm gonna open it up for public comment. Just again, when you step to the microphones, please state your name and address it for the record.
So, my question is, if our property gets changed to commercial, can we still continue to farm it until something's developed there?
Sure. Farming is permitted in all zones in the township.
And what is the process? Is there a process or are we just continuing?
They're permitted in all zones. It's a use by right, so you don't need us to farm.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'm Lynn Pape. I live at 194 King Road and I also have a home at 3257 Rising.
Wait a second, Lynn. Jack, can you give her a microphone to hold so she's not?
Can you hear me?
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Okay. Lynn Pape. I live at 194 King Road and I have a home at 3257 Rising Road, which is right where they want to do the commercial. It's at the corner of Grillo and Rising. They said there's sewage available. My home couldn't get sewage. My house, I was told, was not uphill from the church and they wouldn't cross the road and put it into the plant. So, if there's sewage available, it's not available on that side of the road.
Wait, can I clarify something on that? Our municipal authority might have said that they're not gonna extend sewers. Our authority doesn't extend sewers for private property. I mean, they'll do a project like they're doing the Village of Lawrence right now. I mean, you would have access if you wanted to extend the sewer on your own, just like we said, some developer right above that property there, he'd have to extend the sewer on his own.
So, they would bring it across the road and down into the treatment.
If that's the access where they need it, the developers will pay for that.
Okay, as I said, when they were putting the sewer system in, I came to the meetings and I was told my house was not uphill from the church, so they wouldn't bring it that far.
Yeah.
So, there is no sewage on that side of the road.
You're downhill from the treatment plant.
I'm uphill from the church.
But downhill.
I'm on the other side of the road. I am uphill from that treatment plant.
Oh, okay.
Because I am not on Creedmore Road. I'm on Rising.
They extended sewers to all the concentrated areas and any street or area that asked them to extend it, they did look at it. And if the cost of that extension could be paid for by the tap fees and the customers tapping in, then they would have done it. But other areas where if they would have had to extend the line and maybe spend $500,000 and they were gonna get $100,000 in taps, they just didn't do that.
I don't know what the cost was or would have been to them. I was just told that my house wasn't uphill from the church.
They looked at every area that was asked.
I beg to differ because water runs downhill from my house to the church. Anyway, there is no sewage on that side of the road. We were at a meeting last week and about the towered property and Rising Road was brought up because it isn't sufficient to handle the traffic. It's a bad road. You have the underpass. There's at least 10 trucks a week that have to back up from that underpass and back around that turn. Now, you want to put commercial use up there and you're gonna be bringing more trucks onto Rising Road with that underpass and the road falling away. It makes no sense to even think about doing that unless the state repairs that road at least. And if you're gonna use Grillo Road as an access to it, that road cannot handle the traffic either. And I don't know what the weight limit is on Rising, but I don't think it's sufficient for all the commercial traffic that you would get.
I want to clarify something too. These are proposed. That does not mean that all board members are in support of all of these, so please understand that, one, we're listening to your comments, but two, there may be things that are, sorry, that are proposed that some board members asked for and others don't agree with. So, don't automatically assume that all of us are in favor of all of these changes. What is this?
Hello, my name is Alan Rank. Currently reside at 2053 E Highway 316 in Citra, Florida. However, I used to own 200 acres adjacent.
Mr. Rank, I'm gonna stop you. Are you currently a Cecil Township taxpayer or resident?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, paying taxes. I own 47 acres in Cecil.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not an interloper. I'm a real person that has an interest here. First of all, I want to tell you, thank you. You have been one of the most astute boards to do what I tried to do in South Fayette when I was a commissioner 30 years ago, and that was the recognition that generating revenue that doesn't generate children in school is the only way for a long-term plan to be successful for any community. The fact that you're looking forward to doing things that are a little different and that are forward-thinking, I think is a great idea, whether you agree with what I request or not. But I happen to still own 47 acres. I used to own what was called the Horse Farm on Rising Road, 1683, and I own the property that is between John Nymfer and Richard Till, and it goes all the way up to the Turnpike. And we wouldn't be having this conversation if it hadn't been for the eminent domain of 47 acres of my property about eight years ago, which forced me to change direction. However, I have at my own expense extended sewer lines to the Midway Sewer Authority. I currently have the house that I used to live in go there along with all the neighborhood houses that I paid for to go into that system. Because of the location of my properties, there is no way for me to get to the Cecil Township Sewer Authority without about $3.5 million worth of pipe. And they don't want, you know, they're not gonna do it, as Tom said. I've already expended the monies to put things in and I'm gonna be spending another $75,000 if I can't get approval to extend sewers to what is basically gonna be a dead end where there's already single-family homes and no chance for further development. I'm asking in the overall, I'm actually coming to the planning commission to subdivide the 47 acres, requesting initially six one-acre lots. Six one-acre lots that basically, if anybody knows where Tim Walker's farm, it's just across from there between John Nymfer and Richard Till. At about, I don't know the numbers there because nobody lives there. But anyways, in doing this, I found out that cost-effectiveness of the plan that I was gonna put in became prohibitive because of the fact that it is a dead-end sewer line. So, what's happened is I'm gonna get two-inch sewer with force mains and grinder pumps going to Midway because there's no other logical way to develop the property. So, what I'm asking is that the board consider not only what you're doing on this mixed-use development, but to, my property is about 600 feet from where you currently are reviewing. And all I'm asking for is, I'm coming in with my subdivision, one way or the other, and working with the board and the planning commission to get it developed, but then asking that there be consideration for one additional that you're already using, R2 categorization for these six lots. The reasoning is that because of the cost of development, it is excessive and not economically feasible for a developer to come in and want to build single-family homes on those properties where we're forced, I'm gonna be forced to provide them with sewage, the water and everything else is there. And if we can, we would like to put in what we call luxury duplexes, actually a position that they're gonna be marketed just to basically empty nesters, people wanting to downsize. There'll still be 2,100 square feet.
Mr. Rank, I hate to interrupt you. This is, this is great, but this is not specific.
I understand. I'm making, a long story. All I'm asking, could you please consider in your rezoning, the inclusion of this? I was asked, this was a proper place to bring it up or start the process, to consider the rezoning of the six-acre lot, one-acre lots into availability to put in R2 on those developments, just on six acres that is up against this. So, I'm not looking for anything special, just looking for a continuation of what the board has already considered.
Just please understand though, this wasn't part of what was advertised, so we would have to.
I understand.
Yeah, this, so none of this could actually be considered or decided on based on this hearing. So, we would have to re-advertise.
But if I didn't bring it up now, when you're in the midst of doing a lot of this stuff, I felt that I would miss a good opportunity to do it as a comprehensive plan. Not that it's included already, I understand that.
Right, but the, what was advertised, what, and sent to Washington County Planning, sent to the planning commission, was what we're considering tonight. So, in order to make any changes to that, we would have to hold another hearing, send it to the planning commission. So, I don't want.
Would it be easier for me just to come in for a rezoning request on a one-off?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I didn't know. I just, I heard about this when I, Liz and Jack both were saying, this is a good time to plead your case just to make sure that it makes sense. And if that's the necessary step, I don't have any problem with that. I'm only taking advantage of the public hearing that I thought would be a good time to make it sort of a continuation rather than what I would consider a spot.
It would be faster for you if that, this is what you want, to go through the rezoning process than to have us re-advertise and do it.
No, 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 I don't expect you to stop what you have in progress. I'm just bringing it up as a fact of you're doing a comprehensive, I think comprehensive means comprehensive, you know, better to think about it.
We've been going through this process for quite a long time.
Well, I wish I had known earlier and I would have probably brought it a lot earlier, but this is the way it is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kelly Sturdivant. That's Sturdivant, S-T as in Tom, U-R-D as in David, I-V as in Victor, A-N as in Nancy, T as in Tom. And I live at 36 Cecil Elementary Drive, Cecil.
I'm sorry, can you speak a little louder?
Okay. I thought you could hear me, sorry.
That's okay.
First question is, the presentation that the engineer gave, I don't think that many people could see it from where we're seated. It's kind of small. Is there a chance that it could be posted on the website or we could get copies of it?
You can get copies of it. So, either stay after the meeting and talk to Jack or submit a right-to-know request to the township and then we'll get it to you that way.
Okay, thank you.
You're all.
I've got a couple of questions. And first, I'd like to say I have no opinion one way or the other about this rezoning. I'm just more interested in kind of what's driving it and where it came from. I understand from what was presented that there was a comprehensive planning committee that put some things together, so I'm wondering, but then I also hear that not everybody, not all the supervisors are in agreement with what's being presented. So, I'm understanding really, I'd like to understand what's really driving this. And I will make a note that property that my family owns on Rising Road, I, out of the blue, got two offers for our property and have never gotten offers before. So, I'm wondering, are developers driving this or are there certain members of the supervisors' committee that are driving it?
I can, I can kind of explain. So, to Mr. Rank's point, and I think Supervisor Casuola made this point, we are constantly looking for areas in the township in which we can bolster our tax base. And in order to do that, we have to look at different ways to zone areas so that it doesn't drive up the cost, but allows us to bring in businesses or residential or whatever it needs to be. This has been a long time coming. We've been looking at this comprehensive plan, well, for as long as I've been on the board. Yeah, for a long time. Yeah, it's been a long time. So, this didn't just, this wasn't a fast process, but we also owe it to our taxpayers to be responsible in how things are developed. So, this is a process that happens in every township across the state. They make plans for what they want their township to look like, and this is just part of that process. I can't speak to why a developer would or would not make somebody an offer other than this process has been open to the public and developers do pay attention to that. So, maybe they saw something that was potentially on here and now it has piqued their interest in your property. It may be totally random, but please understand, this is not driven by any one specific developer, any one specific development. This is something that we do in townships across, across the state.
To go one step further on what our chairman said, we don't need to address residential developers. They're gonna come in, they're gonna, they know where they want to go, they're gonna look for property, approach property owners and work their own deals. We, it's the commercial developers that come to the township and ask, what do you, here's my business, where can I go? What zones allow this? So, residential people don't need us, the developers. They're gonna find it, they're gonna come to us with a subdivision. So, that's what's driving it, that we have to, we don't have to worry so much about residential areas, we need to find commercial areas so when somebody comes, we have a place for them, a suitable place for them. So, that's what's driving it.
If I might ask another question?
Also, what's driving it is the Turnpike. You got access right there off of Rising Road and go north and south. So, that's driving a lot of it and it's in Washington County.
Right, I understand there's more accessibility to this area now, but it didn't explain to me that so many people would be interested in it.
I mean, I don't know who approached you, residential people or commercial?
They were commercial people. One was a written offer and the other was more of a solicitation. We would often get offers for timber, but never for the property like that. And I got them like within a couple of weeks of each other just recently. But let me move on to my second question. How were the specific properties selected for the different rezoning? And I'll give you an example. The first property on Rising where Hallam Road intersects Rising is being rezoned from what, I don't know what the original zoning was for that property, but it's being rezoned, proposed rezoning to mixed-use residential. The adjacent property to it, very similar size and topography, is being proposed mixed-use commercial. And I'm just wondering, how, how do you determine which would be which?
That kind of goes back to the Turnpike. I mean, if you go to the top of the hill, you can already see that Burns and Skello bought everything up there. They bought the Paintball Place and they bought on the other side of the road. They've bought everything.
So, what was that property originally zoned as?
Dan might know. That's in South Fayette, isn't it?
As it stands right now, all of the property that's being proposed up along Rising Road to be changed is all being changed from R1 to either mixed-use commercial, mixed-use residential, commercial, or R2. It's already R2. The Silver Creek piece is already R2. It's all R1 right now. This is a comprehensive change along that corridor.
Okay. So, even like where Zanies live, there's any property is considered farmland residential and being changed to commercial, I think?
Yeah, I mean, yes. I mean, and I think, I think the idea, again, I'm just remembering, this all came out of the steering committee and the map, as this is being proposed, was tried to mirror what was proposed from the steering committee. So, they thought through about the particular uses. The mixed-use commercial was again to try to put it along the state road, which is Rising Road. The commercial was put adjoining to the new expressway or close as it could be, thinking that people would take advantage from the visibility there and the access. And then the perimeter was made with the mixed-use residential just because it was thought that it was sort of like a ramping down from, from the higher intensity.
Proximity to the.
To the lower intensity, yeah.
Okay, okay.
One other thing, that when the steering committee presented their map, their proposals, they just showed mixed use. They didn't break it down further between what should be the, you know, the mild commercial and what should be the residential. They just said, all this area should be mixed use. And then our planning commission and our board worked on it from there.
Okay, okay, great. That's all my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Linda Boswell, B. as in Boy, O.S. as in Sam, W.E.L.L. Um, I don't want to go over the same questions that my sister did, but, um, so I'm gonna address Hallam Road. The house that I have is on Hallam Road, but it's mainly on Rising Road. So you are proposing to rezone that property, and all the way up Hallam Road, as mixed, mixed-use residential. Can you all tell me if you've ever been on Hallam Road? Ever?
Sure.
You have? All of you?
Me.
One time or another. One, one time or another, I'm sure everybody was.
Do you, did you ever have two cars going in opposite directions on Hallam Road? I can't see why you would designate Hallam Road as, there's no room unless you do major road construction on there.
But see, if it becomes a mixed-use residential, some developer, there could be a requirement under a conditional use, or something where he would have to improve that road. The township normally doesn't improve roads like that, I mean, they'll keep them paved and passable, but they don't widen roads for future development, it's normally up to whoever develops, but you know, at least it's gonna be residential.
I know that you, I've heard you say that, um, you were looking at township roads to change those, that, those areas as mixed-use residential, and keep the mixed-use commercial on the state road.
No, not, not completely, we, we have specific uses in the mixed-use commercial that have to be on a state road. There could be some mixed-use, some service commercials that are on a, on a township road, but our, our ordinance specifically picks out the, the, maybe the more, the busiest or the more severe of those mild commercials to have access on a state road.
Okay, I, I guess my comment is, um, I am undecided about the whole thing also, but, um, I think it'd be better to rezone that area as mixed-use commercial, if you can. Yes, I misunderstood something, and the entrance can be from Ri, from Rising Road, that's not in any great shape. I've heard Ron, I think at the Toward, um, property hearing, you say, maybe twice, how bad Rising Road was? Mrs. Barney, I think that you maybe was at that meeting, but via whatever, and I heard you mention it, I have not heard-
The state needs-
-that time, I know, Mrs. Fisher, you've said it too, but come on, you gotta fix Rising Road before you think about doing anything. And I know it's not, I know it's a state road.
Rising Road is a state road.
I know, I understand that.
And they, Rising Road has been an orphan for as long as I can remember.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't understand it.
And until they come in, but, you know-
And they're just gonna fix it. I, I used to call the state once a year, asking about the condition of Rising Road, and their response the last time was, "I thought that the signs that said 'Rough Road' would make a difference." And what happens is, people, when it dips by Zanies, there's like two, couple dips on that road, the people that are coming on the side of the dip, they don't stop to let you go, they come and, and cross in oncoming traffic. Um, so I, another suggestion is, I really think you need to have Pendot here for a meeting.
So Linda, I actually just sat with Jason Ortizai, I sit with him usually once a week, once every other weekend, kind of update on, on what's going on, um, and Rising Road has actually, in a not funny way, become a joke, because we both have advocated, this board has advocated for the improvements to Rising Road, and the state literally refuses to do nothing, to do anything. So if you want to help us and reach out to the state yourselves, I would ask you to do that, um, it's not forgotten, we ask once a month, once every other month, for the state to take a look at it. Jason asks as well, just state rep, Jason Ortizai asks as well, it, this district and Pendot just doesn't take us seriously, for whatever reason.
Well, perhaps the people on Rising Road should go visit the state.
I would encourage you to do that.
That might be better.
Um, quickly too, I want, so you had mentioned mixed-use residential, and why would we rezone it there? Your point kind of was what I said to Tom in the beginning, um, which is, there is not a dramatic difference between residential, that it's currently zoned, and the mixed-use residential that it's proposed. In fact, mixed-use residential on their, under the proposed definition, even calls out that, um, there would be, um, new developments require traffic and parking analysis, and it requires, it says, um, "All regulations of Section 1002 requirements for planned residential development shall be met." So essentially, before a developer could do anything on that road, there would be requirements to improve Hallam Road.
Big requirements.
Right, big requirements by, so I don't know if you've had the, you said you were in the-
Oh, and I want to know, like, another question, I'm on the corner, Rising and Hallam.
Right.
So another question is, um, like, how come everything stopped, the changes at Hallam? Aren't there other big properties that could be?
I mean, there's big properties across the township.
Well, across the street.
Well, there are, but like, we were trying to limit to small changes at first, this is not going to be one and done, like, we're not going to just stop here and say, "Okay, we made some small changes, we're moving on," but we were trying to do a little bit at a time.
But the other thing, we need developers to extend that sewer line, and if somebody buys the next property up, they'll extend it through their property, then the next developer will extend it, and that's normally how, uh, sewers get extended from existing systems. Miller's Run was put in just to, to really accommodate the, the existing malfunctions of the whole village along this, uh, the Miller's Run stream. It wasn't to, to actually spur development, now, they did make the plant big enough for adjacent property to come into the plant, but that's gonna be on the developers, it wouldn't be on our township or our authority.
Okay, my last-
And my thing about Rising Road is, this new development, they're looking to dump another 200, 225 cars a day on that road, and that road can't handle it.
Can you repeat that again, I didn't hear what you said.
Pardon me?
Can you repeat that?
They're looking to dump another 200 to 250 cars a day on that road.
Who is, Ron, who is?
Probably gonna be more.
Who's looking to do that?
Toward.
Oh, oh, but that's, that was tabled, yes.
But, like, anything that you add, I mean, the last, whatever, the last well pad, you, all day long, those trucks, I forget how many weeks, they went back and forth, back and forth, people literally had to stop to let those trucks go through.
Jack was in the meeting, we sat with Range, and we told them, "Hey, we don't think this is the best traffic route for your trucks, but we ultimately can't tell them not to utilize it because it's a state road." But we tried to tell them, we tried to ask them to utilize another route, and they refused.
I guess my problem was, they never slowed down, they own the road.
We tried to tell them, that's unfortunately something that, you know, Jack was, was with me in that meeting, when we sat down with Range, and we said, "Hey, we don't think this is the best plan, but, again, it's a state road." We keep coming back to that, and not because we're trying to beat a dead horse, but because we, our hands are tied. If it were our road, we could put restrictions on it, we could make improvements, we could do things like that, but the reality of Rising Road is, it's a state-owned road. So we're at the mercy of begging the state to make improvements that, right now, they just don't seem motivated to do.
Okay, you may have answered this, but I don't want to go home and not have, make sure I heard the answer. So was the decision to rezone the property on Hallam Road to M.U.A. made at the Comprehensive Planning Commission level, or the Supervisors Planning Committee, or whatever you, you call it?
My gosh, we've made so many changes, I can't remember.
And if you can't, could somebody get back to me on that?
It was not from the Planning Commission, or the, it wasn't from the Comprehensive Plan. They, they only recommended mixed use, with the, our Planning Commission and our board broke it down into the two areas, of mixed-use residential, mixed-use commercial, they only proposed mixed use.
Tom, they proposed mixed use on that area?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that-
Because I looked through some old minutes and, and information from that committee, and I didn't see it.
And I'm surprised that you even mentioned that you'd rather see the mixed-use commercial on your property, or that area there.
I didn't, I'm not saying I'm for either one, but I just thought it'd be easier to do that.
We really hear that.
Okay, whatever. I mean, not whatever, but I, I'm undecided right now, I always think, like, what would my dad want?
Thank you.
Good evening, Tim Walker, 1860 Rising Road, McDonald, PA. My first question pertains to the, uh, the well pad that we just discussed, I think what pushed the vehicles onto Rising Road was the fact that they upgraded Gladden Road within the township, and that was part of the route, because that was the only way they could get to that well pad without, without having to go under a tunnel. So they came up Rising, got on 980, went to Gladden, went across Gladden, and when they got to the road on, or the tunnel on Primrose Road, they made a left and went to the well pad. So that's really what drove those trucks onto Rising Road.
There were other options, they just-
Well, I'm just saying, that's, they upgraded Gladden Road, and you guys know that they upgraded Gladden Road, just to, just for the well traffic, correct?
Yep.
They widened it, and, and put aggregate on the burn.
Right?
No, Gladden.
Yeah, they repaved, they repaved it.
That's what I'm saying, and that's why they did that, and I don't know if they came from the toll road or not, I'm assuming possibly that they did. My first question is, is how many of the property owners that are involved in the rezoning on Rising Road were actually, was there any interaction or requests by these property owners to have their property rezoned? When the board made the final decision to change it from mixed use to all the different categories that you're proposing?
Well, please understand, there's been no final decision made, like, we, this is proposed, we have to go through the process of sending it to the Planning Commission, Washington County Planning, we have to hold this hearing tonight, and then there will be a vote at our September board meeting, so by no means is, is, are any of these changes final. Um, to answer your question, like Supervisor Casiola said, that, that it came from the Steering Committee, so in 2017, 2018, 2019, somewhere around there, a Steering Committee was formed-
Yeah.
-in order to write this comprehensive plan. Out of that came the land use map with these changes. Since that time, those, we've been looking, we being this Board of Supervisors, and the, the Township Planning Commission has been reviewing the proposed changes and trying to figure out what worked, what made the most sense, um, and what needed to be changed, so that's where that came from. So I guess if a resident, I don't know, I don't remember who sat on the Steering Committee at this point, so if they sat on the Steering Committee, or if they had attended any one of the probably 100 public meetings we've had at this point on this, then yes, otherwise no.
Okay. No, I was just curious if any of the residents drove some of the classifications that you're proposing.
It, just on Rising or overall?
No, no, just on Rising particularly, or across the township, there aren't that many other changes across the township.
So some of them were driven by owner request, yes.
Okay. I know Darlene has a piece of property that's being rezoned, and I'm sure she was involved in requesting that.
Yes.
Yeah, that's not accurate, we, we needed, South Point was completely built out, that, that property of Butts South Point, as a matter of fact, uh, Washington County Redevelopment Authority, they didn't take it, they bought part of her property and changed it into SD, instead of doing all of it SD, they just took a part of it.
Ah, okay.
So I mean, that's a natural extension of South Point, I mean, that's been our most successful and profitable tax base we've had, so to extend South Point, that's, that's a, it's a, really the, the best thing we could do. So she really had nothing to do with that, we, we, we came up with that as an extension of an existing, successful park.
Okay.
If there was more property, we could extend South Point, but it's trapped now, that's about the-
Because I know there's some additional properties that wrap around the backside, on Cleaver.
No, that's, that's all residential, um, not that of Butts South Point.
No, no, it'd be on the other side of the road.
It had a common line with South Point, and the next piece has a common line with hers, so that's the only natural extension of South Point we have that we could find, so that's why we're looking to do that now, along with that muse property, like I said, that could develop tomorrow.
And besides, whenever I sold the 20 acres way back in 1995, it took them a long time for them to get me to sell it. But I made sure that it was gonna be sewage, water, for future, here we are, 30 years later, thank you very much.
Uh, just to go on the record, I'm, I'm opposed to what you're all proposing to do to Rising Road. Uh, the town, one of the township's, you know, selling points is the rural setting, and to say that the exit off of the turnpike is gonna bring all this development and, and business, I think is, I think that's, we won't be alive when it happens.
No, I, I disagree with you there.
I mean, look how long it's taken Bridgeville to develop.
It's already happening up by the Paintball Place, go to South Fayette and check it out.
Well, that, that's why I mentioned future boards, I mean, you're right, it, it might not happen next year, the year after, it might not happen for five or 10 years, but this township's gonna be here basically forever, and there's gonna be boards sitting here forever, so I mean, it, it's future planning, that's what this is.
Yeah, I mean, I get the, I get the thought process behind increasing the tax base, but do we put as much thought process into reducing costs at the township?
Absolutely.
I mean, I know, I don't know the total dollar number on what we're spending up at the maintenance facility, but-
We put a lot of thought into our budget every year, which is why we've been able to keep taxes low and still expand services for the residents, so, while I understand the point you're trying to make, I think it's misplaced. I, I understand your desire to keep Rising Road rural, and I'm not gonna say whether or not I agree or disagree with you, but you'll see in my vote in September whether I agree or disagree with you, um, but to say that we're, we're trying to do this because we're willy-nilly spending-
No, 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 I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, are we putting as much effort into cost control?
More, we spend, we spend a lot of time, every year, every month, every week, making sure that we're spending on needs, not once.
On the, on the proposed changes to the ordinance, why would we not finalize those changes before we jumped into the rezoning that actually uses those changes? I would think that we would have the ordinances finalized, so that when you're declaring a property of such a type, that it's clear to the public what that means. The fact that we're talking about what it means, and this is what we're proposing-
But you heard what Dan said, he showed the first three, uh, areas, those are existing zones that it's just gonna be changed to another zone, it had nothing to do with the comprehensive plan, or these new zones, that, that's why he brought up the Rising Road area, Racing Road area last, because that's the only one that's being contemplated of, of, of taking advantage or using these new zones we're creating. The other three are independent, they, they could be done without this hearing.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm still gonna ask the question, why would we not finalize all that before, I, I mean, how are we supposed to understand what's gonna be there if we haven't even finalized?
It will be done first.
We haven't finalized anything yet.
So you'll vote on the ordinances and finalize those before you vote on the zoning?
For the ones-
On the uses.
Yeah, the ones that, but the ones that are gonna be impacted, yes, we would definitely have the ordinances in place before we can call on that zone, these two new zones don't even exist yet, so we wouldn't change any property to some zone that doesn't exist.
So we would vote on those, the public would know what's included in those zones before we actually voted on the zoning changes?
It's pretty much same ones that are in commercial right now.
Well, what I'm saying is, you're not, I understand the commercial, but as Tom pointed out on Rising Road, the different categories, the mixed-use residential and-
It's, that's what's here tonight, have you seen the list of the permitted uses for, um, uh, mixed-use residential, mixed-use commercial? I mean, that's what's here for the hearing, have you, can you look at it, or have you looked at it?
Well, here's the thing too, I've gone on the website, and there's nothing, there's nothing on the website about what you're proposing, I heard the prior request, you said you have to fill out a-
We can get it to you, and-
Well, why don't we just post it, so everybody can see it?
So, Mr. Walker, I'm gonna tell you that Tom and I had quite the heated discussion about this, and I agree with you, I have agreed with you, we came to this solution where essentially we're, um, doing them side by side, although I agree with you, that's not my preference, my preference would have been to do the definitions first, and then make the zoning changes, but I do understand what Supervisor Casiola's saying, which is that none of the changes will be voted on, um, none of the zoning changes that will be voted on, will be voted on before the definition- None of the zoning changes that will be voted on will be voted on before the definition changes. But you missed quite a fun meeting where Tom and I went round and round about this.
I try to catch up on them on YouTube, but I don't always see all of them. The one was over two hours long.
That's where our meetings are live streamed, YouTube.
I'm talking about, I thought the circus part...
You didn't know you were a YouTube star, did you, Tom?
No, I thought it was just the circus part was on YouTube.
No, no, no. Our township meetings are livestreamed every time and recorded on YouTube.
Yeah, now that I'm retired, if I have some time to kill in the afternoon, I'll watch a meeting.
That was a fun one, so you should... I love them to death, we get along very well, but that was a rough meeting, and I agree with you. But we are where we are at this point, and we're just trying to move forward.
So the ordinances will be finalized separately from the vote on the zoning?
Yeah, they have to be. Yeah, we can't vote as one lump. Every parcel will be individual, so the zoning change...
Well, no, it doesn't have to be.
It doesn't have to be, but that's how we're going to do it.
Because you only have really, I know the Kemp family, I know you only have a half a dozen property owners.
Yes, because every board, sorry, she said not necessarily, absolutely. We are going to vote individually on every parcel because board members may want to vote yes on one and no on another, so we're not going to lump them together. And I get that choice as chairperson.
Because like I said, I know there's only a half a dozen large parcel owners between the exit where South Fayette Way, which I don't know why a road that comes into Cecil Township is called South Fayette Way, or why the exit says South Fayette Way. But either way, between there and Hallam, there's only several parcel, large parcel owners. And the one parcel, the 145 acres, is owned by someone that lives in Hilton Head or something, I believe, where the old slate dump is, that used to be a Shifoni property. I guess that's about it, really. The only other thing was, we know how long that it took for the end of 50 and the 79 area to develop. And there's a lot more pull to bring people to that area than there is to Rising Road. I understand there's a lot of traffic on the new turnpike, because I hear them hit the rumble strips every day.
Just keep talking, it'll pick you back up.
I hear them hit the rumble strips multiple times every day. And they're just, they're going from north to 79. They're not looking for a place to stop along the way. If they were, they would take 79. And Rising Road is another thing. I would hope that we could get something done, or push, the township could push to get something done. I mean, they can't even keep the culverts open for the water drainage.
We need you, and I can't say that enough. And don't call Jason's office, because he knows. What we need you to do is call PennDOT, and we can get you the phone number and the email. If I could dial for you, I would. But they need to hear from you, because I think that they think that the township and state rep Jason Ortizai is just, we're just being complainers to complain, so we need the residents.
Well, they obviously haven't ridden on the road either.
Uh, no, I would guess they have not.
Yeah, yeah. But I would like to maintain the rural atmosphere that we have out on Rising. I've been out there for 60 years, easy, so, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other resident questions? Hang on one second, let him go, and then you can go next. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Tim Quinn, I'm with Burns, Scallow Real Estate. Tim Quinn, Burns, Scallow Real Estate, Q-U-I-N-N. We own the 13 acres right off of South Fayette Way. We also have an additional 55 acres under agreement to purchase. We pushed back closing two months for this issue. We're largely in support of the mixed use districts. We have two issues. One, we would have liked to have been involved in the process a little more. We never received notice of the proposed changes. I think we learned about the ordinance maybe a month or a month and a half ago. The other issue is...
Yeah, we had a...
Yeah, about a month ago, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the first, okay.
Wait a minute, how long ago did you purchase the property?
August of 2022.
2022, we've been doing this since 2019.
And we had a meeting with Mr. Scallow August, or at the beginning of July.
Correct, that was when we first learned of it, we asked for a meeting.
That's not when you first learned about it, because we've been trying to schedule a meeting prior to that. So I wholeheartedly disagree with your comment that you've been blindsided by this change.
Okay. But like I said, we're largely in favor of it. Our issue is, there's not enough uses in the mixed use commercial district. We think there's other types of residential uses that should probably be included. Also, most mixed use districts also include office. So if we had the process to explain what we had thought should be included, we would have liked that opportunity.
Can I stop you just for a second? We did give you the opportunity, in fact, we sat with your boss. And my guess is that this is coming from the fact that he wants it to be residential developed up there and not commercial, which is why you're standing here saying you want more residential use in the commercial zone, correct?
More options. I mean, given the topography up here, the grading, we don't know what we're going to do on this site yet. So having more options available to us is what we would have proposed.
Again, your boss also canceled, Tom, when was the meeting, August 3rd? We had a second meeting scheduled, it was August 3rd or August 5th, that was canceled by your boss. So again, Dan, Tom, and I were prepared to attend a meeting to discuss the options, and you guys canceled. So now you're standing at our public hearing, pounding your fist and saying, "We didn't give you a voice, we did."
I pounded my fist, I said we're largely in support of it, we just don't think it goes far enough.
You don't think it because you want something different than what the... He wants residential, the people that we met with want residential, and that's in opposition of what this is.
We don't know what we're doing on that site yet. The topography and the expenses to bring public utilities, we would like the options to remain open.
That's not what we were told.
Plus, in Pennsylvania, the law says every parcel in the township has to be zoned something. So, I mean, you can't just leave it open yet.
No, we think more uses should be permitted uses in the mixed use district. We're in favor of the mixed use district. We're used to seeing other uses permitted in mixed use districts, including office, different types of residential townhome developments.
That's...
Yeah, everybody would like to have that. You know, on your wish list, it ain't going to happen.
That's because the proposed development that was proposed by Burns and Scallow was townhomes, to which we said we didn't need any more townhomes in the township. So now you're standing at our public meeting, trying to undercut or undermine when we already said we were not interested in more townhomes.
What we've been looking at is residential of all types. The problem up on that site is the topography and bringing in public utilities is expensive right now. So we would like the options to remain open.
Then I would have encouraged your boss, and I can't, I'm drawing a blank on the other gentleman, to not cancel the meeting that we had scheduled.
Something unexpected came up.
Oh, I'm sure. For all...
We're not trying to be contentious here. We are in favor of it.
We heard you, we understand that you want residential in that area. We also had reiterated that this board was not interested in townhomes on that property. So while we understand your desire for that sort of zoning, that's not what this board is currently interested in. Is there anything else that you want to add?
No, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have to state my name again?
No, we know.
Okay. Just one last question, you said that you would vote on each parcel individually?
Yes.
Would that be behind closed doors, or would that be public?
At our public meeting.
A supervisor's meeting?
Yes, at our supervisor's meeting, most likely in September.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Michael Sullivan, I live at 2334 Lesnet Road in Upper St. Clair.
Unfortunately, because you own township property in Cecil?
I own the property that you just had a very contentious discussion with Mr. Quinn about, so I would like the opportunity to speak, please.
Fine, I just have to clarify that you own property in the township.
Thank you. As Mr. Quinn spoke of, I own the property on Rising Road. I have worked with numerous people, my grandfather owned the property. I was with him when I was younger, and we had the cell tower development up there, which also generated some controversy, but ultimately it went through. I don't know why there's quite this much contentiousness. At the end of the day, you know, I live close by, I'd like to see intelligent, proper development. I know that there's, you know, a lot of emotions in this room about what's going on there. But I also think we have to follow proper procedure and proper plan. The first time that I knew about what was going on on the property was when I received a notice about a month ago. I find it interesting, this has been going on for five years, but yet legally, this was the first time I was notified. And now you're looking at changing a residential parcel into a commercial parcel, which is my parcel. And it was very telling that when the last gentleman came up here and said that, "Did you work with any of the landowners?", I know for a fact that you haven't, because I was never notified, talked about, or otherwise any... There was no communication whatsoever about working with me on this. Again, as Mr. Quinn said, you know, I'm generally in support of mixed use. I'm generally in support of working with the township here. But I think it needs to be collaborative, and it seems like it is not collaborative, it's quite combative. So I would simply ask that you work with us collaboratively to develop that area.
So first of all, I want to address your comment that this has not been advertised. This has been advertised since 2017, 2018, 2019, every single time. So whether or not, I'm guessing by your address, that you live in the township of Upper St. Clair, so therefore you don't live close by in my definition of close by.
The address on the parcel, the mailing address, has not changed in 10 years.
But your actual residence is not close by. If you lived in the township of Cecil, my guess is...
You sent the notification to my post office box. The post office box has been the same post office box for 10 years, and this is the first time I've gotten a notification.
I have no obligation to notify every resident. It said that on the slide that Mr. Dizeroth put up, we did that out of courtesy. We have advertised in the paper, on our website, repeatedly, every single time we've had a meeting. This did not come up a month ago, this has been years in the making, first of all. Second of all, I understand that you want more development. We had a gentleman come in last week and propose 100 homes off of King Road, and we sent him, we tabled it and sent him on. It is the obligation of this board to make sure that the development that happens within these borders makes sense for us, for the residents that live here, and for the taxpayers. The purpose of this rezoning that we're doing tonight, as was addressed multiple times, was to bolster our tax base without adding to the schools, hence the industrial zoning, the mixed use commercial, the mixed use residential. Adding multiple rows of townhomes, I think there was at least 100 proposed on the property that you're talking about, does not reach those goals for us. So while I understand that that's what Mr. Scallow wants, and perhaps you as the property owner want, you also have to understand the obligation of this board to look out for our residents who live here and the taxes that we collect. So we heard you, we understand. Whether or not we agree, you'll find out, whether or not we agree with that, you'll find out when we vote in September. My issue and the contention with Mr. Quinn coming to the table was his and your, to be frank, your message that you were sending out to the residents was that you were shocked by this. Well, considering we took special time to meet with Mr. Scallow, and I think the guy's name was Dan, I cannot remember, I have... Steve Whittingham. We took special exception to meet with him in July, and then scheduled a follow-up meeting in August that was canceled on us. And then for you to stand here and say that we just shocked you with this is, quite honestly, offensive to this board. You, we hear you. We understand that in mixed use development, you believe townhomes should be allowed. You believe that more residential should be allowed, that is not...
That's not correct. That is not correct. So you just said multiple things that weren't correct. Number one, I was included on the email, and that I was not... Nobody reached out to me and said, "Oh, Mr. Sullivan, do you still want to have the meeting or anything else?" The email said, you know, "Mr. Scallow can't make it, can we reschedule?" There was no communication to me, even though I was on that email chain.
Mr. Whittingham emailed us and said, "Could we reschedule, Mr. Scallow is unavailable." What were we supposed to say? No? You didn't attend the first meeting, I don't think you're on, I don't remember seeing you on here. So what would you have suggested we say?
I'm just asking to be considered, I was on that email chain. If I need to file a public records request to show you that I was on that email chain, I will be happy to.
You don't need to file a public records request, I have the email communication right here.
I'm respectful of your time, Ms. Fisher, I'm respectful of the board's time. What I would not like is, I would not like my property to be rezoned without my consent from residential to commercial. And that sounds like what's sort of going on here.
So the email was sent to Dan Dizeroth and Cindy Fisher. Copied on the email was James Scallow, Brian Walker, and MJF Sullivan.
That would be me.
The email says, "Dan and Cindy, I'm terribly sorry to do this to you, but can we please move our Thursday 8:3 meeting up to 10 o'clock the same day? If not, we may need to find another day that works for all of us." Both Dan and I were unavailable, we had another meeting. Unfortunately, we were able to move it up. And, hold on, let me scroll through, just because I want to put this out here for you. And then Dan said, "Hi Steve, good afternoon, Cindy and I are speaking this afternoon, we'll get back to you with some dates." Wonderful, thank you. At no point did Steve or anybody else, you included, who were apparently copied on this email, respond that you would like to keep the 1 o'clock meeting, or that you, there was an urgency to holding that meeting.
Understood, because I thought there would be additional communication. So going back to my original point, it seems that the board is very interested in rezoning my property from residential to commercial. Does the board at least recognize the fact that it might make sense to leave that property as residential?
I guess we'll find out when we vote in September.
You might not, because I may file suit to prevent it if that needs to be. So I would at least appreciate the board's consideration on this. And I think the last gentleman's point, which is very well, is that we really need to figure out what the zoning is going to look like, what these new districts are going to look like, before we just run it straight through.
We just stated that we're going to do that. We're going to go over all the uses.
I thought you just said that you weren't going to do it, that you were going to vote on it, now you're saying you are going to go through with it?
No, 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 we said we're going to go over the uses, and we'll approve them first. Then we'll vote on the zoning.
At the same meeting?
Yes.
More than likely, yes.
Okay.
I think it's important to point out that what I said tonight was, we sort of went in order. The first things were things that are on the top of the priority list. Then we introduced the MUC and the MUR, which are just being introduced tonight for public comment. This is the place for public comment tonight, which you're providing. And then the board is going to look at potential areas to zone those, once that all happens. So again, this is, tonight is really a time to take testimony related to what you think, and you're giving your opinion.
Very much so, and I appreciate the opportunity.
And I just think it's important to recognize that it's so hard to coordinate between trying to get to, talk to all the property owners and do whatever. This is the forum tonight that the state requires for things to happen. So this is the first public hearing, and it's, you know, we're taking comments, and that's where, you know...
Understood.
So, okay.
Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Sorry, we'll get to you, we won't leave.
Good evening, Patricia Walker, 1860 Rising Road. My concern is the mixed use commercial... Um, my concern is the, um, mixed-use commercial that is proposed for Rising Road. I wonder why it has to come up as far as it is proposed to come up. I can see keeping it down by the 576, um, entrance ramp, but I don't understand why it has to come up and, um, really be right across the street from these developments that, um, are residential. And although it doesn't affect me, per se, I'm probably another quarter mile up the road, but my fear is if this, um, commercial property is warehouses, things like that, it's gonna really, um, affect their property values. These people have put a lot of money into their homes, and they have beautiful places. And I just wanted to be on record for them, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, my name is Diana Lewandowski, I live on 256 Klinger Road. I've been a resident...
I'm sorry.
Oh, it's Diana Lewandowski, L-E-W-A-N-D-O-W-S-K-I. Got it. Um, I've been a resident for many years, and I just want to say to one of the gentlemen that spoke prior to myself, that many of us may not have been privy to this plan, but there's only one person at fault, and that's us as residents, because it is our business to know what is going on in this township. And if we don't pay attention, yeah, we're all busy, we get that. But if we don't pay attention, shame on us.
Diana, I agree with what you're saying, but I'm gonna ask you to just address the board.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you.
Okay. If we don't pay attention, shame on us. Um, I have not been privy to this whole plan for as long as it has been going on, but I do recall getting a notification years ago, saying that if you'd like to be part of the planning of these new zoning areas in the, in the district, that send a notification in, let the township know that you want to be part of it. So, we've had ample chances, we've had ample opportunity to find out what is going on, whether it be speaking with our board members, and I'm sure you're all welcoming our ear if we need to do that. Um, but let's keep an open mind. And one other thing, please, at these meetings, whether we agree or we disagree with what is going on in this township, let's keep the dissension, the arguments, the not-so-kind tone of voices to a minimum. Because whether this man was privy to what was going on or not, I think we all need to once in a while bite our tongues and just find another way to phrase it. We've had enough embarrassing meetings, I personally don't want to be at another one. But let's just be firm, but be kind. It's just what we tell our children in school. We tell them, "You go there, you're respectful, you're kind, you listen, and you shut up when you need to." So, I'm just pleading with you all, let's not make asses out of ourselves in this township, excuse my French. Let's just do the right thing, let's just behave like respectable adults. I'm no better a lot of times myself, but we gotta take a look in the mirror sometimes. Thanks for listening.
Any other questions by residents or comments?
Hi, my name is Ray Stevens, uh, I have a property...
Can you say your last name?
S-T-E-V-E-N-S. I have a resident on 54 Shafoni Road, and I also have a piece of property on, uh, 980 Road, McD, in McDonald, towards McDonald, on, uh, it's 33, 334 980 Road. Uh, you said you were in favor of bringing more, uh, commercial properties and less residents. Uh, I have a piece of property that's been on 980 Road, it has a non-conforming building, I have 4,000 square feet over there. Uh, it's been, uh, commercial non-conforming since, uh, 2012. Then they rezoned it residential because the guy passed away, and I bought the property. And I asked to be rezoned back to commercial non-conforming, and I got laughed at by the township when I asked them if I could have a meeting with you guys, and they said it would never happen. Um, my question is, you want to bring more commercial business into this township, but you wouldn't even hear me out, why is that?
I, I mean, I can't really address that because I don't know who told you we wouldn't have a meeting, you as a resident have a right to come before this board.
Well, they just told me I was wasting my money, it wouldn't happen.
Well, I mean, I would encourage you, we have open public comment at every board meeting, twice, but at the beginning and at the end.
And I, and I'm pretty sure everyone from Ronnie Down knows that Swinski had a welding shop, and that was an old gas station there forever. It was always commercial. And I have a commercial vehicle that's a service truck, I don't work on equipment there, but I park my truck there, and I get harassed by the neighbors calling the cops on me all the time. I can't keep my stuff there, and then when I tried to have a meeting set up, they just told me, "Don't even waste your money."
I, I, again, I can't, I don't know who said that to you, I can't say anything other than you have the right to be heard, so...
Well, my thing is, the, the property sat vacant for only one year. So if you rezone these properties, commercial, they sit vacant, they should be automatically rezoned back to residential then by your standards. Correct?
Again, I don't know the situation, the backstory, I, I can't, I don't want to get into a disagreement here, but I'm just gonna say if you would like your property be rezoned, you have the right as a resident to apply for a rezoning.
Which should have never been took off the commercial to begin with.
I didn't make that choice, so I can't, again...
Okay, but so now, if these properties do become commercial...
Mr. Stevens, I'm gonna...
I'm just, I'm gonna ask you a question, if these properties do become commercial, and they sit vacant for over a year, will they go back to residential?
Mr. Stevens, we've already answered that. If they're rezoned commercial, they will stay commercial. If you would like to come before this board for a zoning change, I would encourage you to do that, we will not laugh at you, we will take you seriously. I can't guarantee the outcome of the hearing, but we will, we will hear you out. And that's all I can say. We, I, I understand what you're saying, I, I don't know why you felt that way, I don't want to get into it publicly, but if you would like a rezoning, you as a resident have a right to request that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the floor?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. Uh, my name is Ned Williams, I reside at 415 East Maiden Street in Washington, but I'm here this evening, uh, representing the Montour Trail Council, uh, when we received the same letter that all of you received. Uh, we looked through this, we looked at the, at the map that came with the letter. And, uh, I have been directed by my colleagues to speak for the Montour Trail Council and just say that, uh, we are not opposed, uh, to, uh, these changes as we understand them, although I must say that Mr. Dizeroth's presentation revealed a great deal more depth, uh, and a great deal more thought that's gone into this, uh, than, than we had suspected. We are hopeful, as are the board, and hopefully all of you, uh, that these will result in long-term changes for the good in the township, uh, even though there may be some points of friction, but we're hoping that this will be for the good in the township. Uh, in the, uh, the one, uh, area that does affect the Montour Trail is, uh, the one area, uh, south of Burnside Road, that's, uh, proposed for a change down there. Of course, what we would like to be able to do is to be able to get the Muse branch extended so that it serves the citizens and the people in Muse, and connects them to the main part of the Montour Trail, thereby, uh, affording all of those, uh, folks in that part of the township to, uh, to have access to this great recreational amenity that the township's been supportive of. Uh, but of course, that depends on working with the private property owner down there as these changes go through, and, uh, hopefully, uh, hopefully we can set the stage for that. Um, we've, uh, we've been here a long time, the very first section of the Montour got built in Cecil back in 92. We hope to be here a long time, we hope to be, be able to continue to provide the citizens of Cecil Township with a, with a good recreational facility, and, uh, we're, we're just hopeful that this, this overall thing will help to set the stage for furthering that. Uh, so, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Any other comments by residents from the floor? Before we, I did forget about one, um, it was actually addressed by a resident comment that was emailed to this board, but, um, for those of you that don't know, there's a, an proposed industrial zone, it's an I-1 light industrial, um, that is clo, in close proximity to the residents of Muse and to the Muse Elementary School. We are aware of it, um, when we sent it to Washington County Planning, um, we had already planned a buffer there in, between the school and that zone. Um, and right now, that, that zone, that buffer is proposed to be 150 feet. Um, we had talked prior to this meeting, or I had talked, uh, to a couple board members prior to this meeting, and I would propose that that buffer be increased to 200 feet, just to make sure, um, there's a, there's a significant enough buffer between the, the school and the residents and the, the proposed light industrial. But otherwise, if there's no other board member comments or comments from the floor, this hearing is, um, closed. Any other comments before I close? Okay. This hearing is officially closed.